Well, if we're all, we all see the slides and we're ready to begin, why don't we pray? And we're going to use a prayer of St. John Chrysostom, which he prayed before opening the sacred scriptures. And let's pray this together: "Name of the Father, and of the Son, and of the Holy Spirit."
Amen. Oh Lord Jesus Christ, open the eyes of my heart, that I may hear your word and understand and do your will; for I am so dear upon the earth, late and mature manly. Open my eyes, that I may perceive the wonders of your law; be gone to me the hidden and secret things of your wisdom. On you do I aspire, O God, that you shall enlighten my mind and understand it with the light of your knowledge, but only to interpret those things which are written, but to do them. That is reading the lives and sayings of the saints. I may not sin, but that is what they serve for my restoration, enlightenment, and sanctification, for the salvation of my soul and the inheritance of the saints. For you, you enlighten the lifeands of those in darkness and promise you hope for freedom and everything. Amen.
I'm gonna try to, I'm gonna try here to Utah, that will be... Okay, can you still hear me? All right, very good. I muted everyone except for myself, so that it is a little easier for us to communicate. I wanted to start off by speaking about the way in which we are proceeding with this Bible study on the Beatitudes and the Sermon on the Mount. I started from the Beatitudes themselves and looked at them. And then I looked at the text with the teachings which come after it that are part of the Sermon on the Mount. And it is clear that there is a pattern, that the Beatitudes act as a preamble, and we can find within them certain themes that Jesus was trying to express. And then we see those themes spelled out even more so when we look at the teachings that come afterwards. And so, looking at these, it was easy to break it up into four sections, which we're going to be doing the four sessions that we have as part of this Bible study. Session one, which we will have tonight, is the poor in spirit. Who are the poor in spirit, and why are they blessed? The session two will deal with those who are urgently longing for holiness in their lives, and why they are blessed. Session three will deal with the merciful peacemakers, and why they are blessed. And session four will deal with those for whom God alone suffices, that He is the only reality in their life and the central focus of their lives. Included in the email that I sent to you, there is a breakdown of this. You can see how everything is colored coordinated between the four sessions, and you can see the text that we are going to be dealing with in every session. I believe if you look at the Sermon on the Mount, you can see the reason for that sermon, the purpose of the sermon, the purpose for which Jesus gave it, particularly found in that passage that immediately follows the Beatitudes, the simile of salt and light. "You are the salt of the earth; but if salt loses its taste, with what can it be seasoned? It is no longer good for anything but to be thrown out and trampled underfoot. You are the light of the world; a city set on a mountain cannot be hidden, nor do they light a lamp and put it under a bushel basket. It is set on a lampstand, where it gives light to the whole house. Just so your light must shine before others, so that they may see your good deeds and glorify your heavenly Father." The purpose of the Sermon on the Mount is that we might become salt and light, that we might bring the presence of God into the world in which we live, that our lives may touch the lives of others, that they might come to experience the graces which God has for them. How are they to know unless we show them the way? How are they to comprehend and understand unless we show the way? These two illustrations, as is pointed out in the commentary text below it, are images that are associated with the Old Testament. Salt is associated with the covenant of the priesthood made with Aaron and his descendants, as we see in Numbers 18:90, as well as the covenant of kingship made with David and his descendants. And this is particularly apropos for us as followers of Christ, because you and I share in the priestly and the prophetic ministry of Christ by virtue of our baptism. We are called to be salt of the earth, to flavor the earth, to allow the earth, the people of the earth, to come to God, to experience the graces that He has for them. The second sense we see from the Old Testament, which is found in Isaiah 42:6 and 49:6, is that light is associated with the vocation of Israel to make the truth and justice of God shine out to all nations. It is precisely, precisely, my brothers and sisters, precisely, that God's grace shines out through us. We are called to be His people who bring the gospel to bear in our own day and time. Let's turn to the topic for tonight. But before I do, I think there's some introductions that we need to do into the Sermon on the Mount. And we see this particularly at the beginning of the fifth chapter. And there's some interesting things here. First of all, he went up on the mountain. Why did he go on the mountain? Well, the reality is Jesus is the new giver of the new covenant, of the new law. And therefore, just as Moses ascended to the mountain, so that he might receive from God the law, Jesus delivers directly the law of the new covenant directly to them. And we're going to look at this. There is a relationship between Mount Sinai and the Mount of Beatitudes. And we're going to talk about the differences between the two of them in a second. We see his posture after he sat down. He assumes the posture of a Jewish rabbi, speaking with authority. It's funny that that word that is used in the Greek text here for sitting down, kathisantos, is a form of the verb kathizo, which means to take a seated position. And it is from that verb that we get the noun kathedra, which means seat or chair. And from that, we get the word cathedral, which is the church that embodies the bishop's chair, his seat of authority as a successor of the apostles. So liturgically, bishops always preach from a seated position, and they preach from their chair, from their kathedra. If you notice, the pope always preaches sitting down. It's not because he's old and tired. It is because he is preaching from the chair, and the preaching from the chair is a symbol of his authority as a, the supreme pastor of the church, but also a successor of the apostles. And so, we see this connection between Jesus sitting down to give his disciples a sermon, and the teaching authority of the rabbis that preceded him, but also the teaching authority of those who would come after as successors of the apostles. Mount Sinai, oh incidentally, you can unmute yourself if you do have a question, and I will answer any questions that you may have. Okay, let's continue. Let's do a comparison. As I pointed out, the mountain refers to the Mount of Beatitude, but also harkens back to Mount Sinai. And let's look at this reality for a second. Mount Sinai, we see that God gives the law to Israel through Moses. It is a mediation. Remember that at Mount Sinai, if we look back at the book of Exodus, we see that God tried to give the law directly to the people. But they said, "No, no, Moses, God is a little too frightening for us. You go up the mountain and talk to God, and we'll just stay down here and we'll do whatever he tells us. He's altogether a little too frightening for us." And so, Moses goes up and is a mediator between God and the people. It is Moses who takes down the law that God gave him to the people. This is a mediated encounter through Moses. Moses gave a lesser law motivated by fear. We have the "thou shalt nots," right? Now let's compare that to the Mount of Beatitudes. Jesus Christ, the Son of God, gives us the Beatitudes of the kingdom, and He gives them Himself. The disciples come to Jesus. They are drawn to Him. They encounter God directly. And Christ gives a greater law, because it doesn't abrogate or cast down the law that came before. But what it does is it goes beyond the law that came before that God gave to Moses on Mount Sinai. And what Jesus gives is a greater law that motivates us to love. St. Augustine says, "The mountain signifies the higher precepts of righteousness; for the precepts given to Israel were lower. God gave lesser laws to those requiring the bonds of fear, but higher laws to those who are ready to be set free by love." The higher precepts are for the kingdom of heaven. The lower precepts, as he says, is for the kingdom of this earth. And we were, I failed to mention that we were on slide number nine, and we're just about to go to slide number 10. But before we go any farther, I would like to give the opportunity to anyone who would like to ask a question at this point. And you can unmute yourself if you wish. Okay. No one has. So we're ready to continue and go on. Let me see if I can move this down. Okay, there we go. Let's go on. And we continue on to verse two. "And he began to teach them, saying..." I normally would not pick up on this, but one of the commentaries I was consulting pointed out something that was very profound, and that made me look at the Greek text, which says literally, what it literally says. "And he opened his mouth, teaching them, saying..." Matthew mentioning that Jesus opened his mouth emphasized this teaching as one way, that Jesus had come to speak with authority, and the disciples were not to discuss or debate, but were to listen, were to listen to what he had to say. It also emphasizes the fact that this was the giving of the law. This was the giving of the law. So it was very important that they would understand that this is a new covenant that is being established. He opened his mouth, teaching. He taught his one, having authority. And he opens his mouth, and the first words that comes out of his mouth is "blessed," "blessed," makedios from the Greek, which means fortunate or blessed. This term is not used as an invocation, is not used as an invocation of God's blessing, but as a declaration that a person has either received the blessing for God or can expect to receive the blessing of God in the future. This distinction has its roots in the Old Testament. "The Beatitudes of the Sermon on the Mount are of a latter type; for they announce the blessings of the new covenant, which will finally be realized in heaven. Some do promise blessings that are partly enjoyed in this life; but all of them look beyond the struggles and the hardships of this life to the eternal blessedness of the life to come." We're on slide 11. "Blessed are the poor in spirit; theirs is the kingdom of heaven." Who are the poor in spirit? They are those who recognize their need for God. Excuse me. They are those who recognize their need for God and His grace. They are unattached to this world. They find their security in God. They rely on His mercy rather than on merits or material wealth. They are spiritually poor. They can also be economically poor, for these are often rich in faith. But it does not mean that they're always economically poor, because poverty of spirit is an attitude of dependence upon God, of recognition that I rely on God for everything. It is to make Jesus the center of their lives. It is to follow Him. Jesus enjoins his disciples to prefer Him to everything and everyone. He bids them to renounce all that they have for His sake and that of the gospel. "The precepts of detachment for riches are obligatory for entrance into the kingdom of heaven," so the catechism of the Catholic Church tells us. This attitude of poverty of spirit, another commentator tells us, is united, is closely related to the sense of spiritual childhood, spiritual childhood. On the next slide, which is 12, we will see what the spiritual childhood is all about. And where are we to go except St. Therese Lezue? St. Therese came to develop within her own life a spirituality of spiritual childhood. She understood the spiritual life as ultimately being a recognition of her dependence upon God for everything. It is precisely because of the spirituality of spiritual childhood that she has been named a doctor of the church, a rather exclusive club, I should say. We have thousands upon thousands of saints, but there are only at this present moment 37 doctors of the church, of which she is one, of which she is one. Let's see what St. Therese has to say about this spiritual childhood on slide number 12. "Instead of being discouraged, I concluded that God would not inspire desires which could not be realized, and that I may aspire to sanctity in spite of my littleness; for to me, to become great is impossible. I must bear with myself and my many imperfections; but I will seek out a means of getting to heaven by a little way, a short, very straight, a little way that is wholly new." We live in an age of inventions. Remember, she lived in the late 1800s. We live in an age of inventions. Nowadays, the rich need not trouble with climbing the stairs. They have elevators instead. Well, I mean to try to find, I mean to try to find a elevator by which I may rise unto God; for I am too tiny to climb the steep stairway of perfection. I have sought to find in the Holy Scripture some suggestion of what this elevator might be, which I so desired. And I read these words uttered by eternal wisdom itself: "Whoever is a little one, let him come to me." Then I drew near God, feeling sure that I discovered what I sought. Never I have been consoled by the words more tender and sweet. Your arms, then, O Jesus, are the elevator, which must raise me even to heaven. To get there, I need not grow; on the contrary, I must remain little." The saint understood very, 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 very well that she was reliant upon Jesus for her salvation, that she was reliant upon Jesus for her sanctification, that it was precisely by this road of humility and dependence that she would come to the greatness of the kingdom. And to be honest with you, indeed she did. Indeed she did. It was not that long after she had died that she would be raised to the glory of the altar as a saint. Her writings, that she wrote simply in obedience to her religious superiors, one of them being her own sister, who was her priorice. And I mean, not just since her sister in the Carmelite monastery, but also her real sibling, who instructed her to write these things down from her life. These writings were compiled into the story of a soul after her death, and it took the world by storm. Her little way, her little way of sanctification had so inspired so many souls in a time when many were turning away from God. There were many who turned to the Lord because of her writings. And it was not long after her death that she was raised to the glory of the altar as a saint. Let's turn to treasure in heaven. Where does our treasure lie? The sacred scripture says, "Do not store up for yourself treasures on earth, where moth and decay destroy, and thieves break in and steal; but store up treasures in heaven, where neither moth nor decay destroys, nor thieves break in and steal; for where your treasure is, there will your heart be." The idea is very clear. One commentator says, "Man's heart yearns for a treasure that will give him security and happiness." Isn't that true? If I were to ask anyone, "What do you really want out of life?" Most people would say, "Oh, I want to be happy." We want to have security. However, every treasure in the form of earthly goods, wealth, property, becomes a constant source of worth. becomes a constant source of worry. Isn't that true? You've got a roof to fix. What happens if the furnace breaks down? Or the air conditioning doesn't work? Because there's always a risk that you will lose it, and it becomes an effort to protect it, such a strain. Jesus tells us that our treasure lies in good works and in upright life. It lies within the eternal reward of God in heaven, because it is there that our ultimate desire for this treasure of security and happiness will come to its fullness. For what is heaven? But to be in the happiness and the joy of the Lord forever. And our security will be assured, because we will be with the God who loves us. Jesus closes His teaching by saying, He is not saying that people should be unconcerned about earthly things. What He does say is no created thing can be the treasure, the ultimate aim of man. What humanity should do is make their way to God, sanctify themselves, give all to the glory of God by making right use of the things of the earth. For where your treasure is, there also your heart will be. I'd like to look particularly at this last verse of this passage. And I'd like to look at it by the perspective that comes to us from the Eastern Church. This quote that I have before you, it looks like a catechism, doesn't it? Because it is a catechism. This is the catechism of the Ukrainian Greek Catholic Church called Christ Our Paska, or Christ Our Resurrection, Christ Our Easter. And in this, it speaks about the Eastern understanding of the heart as the core of the human person. This flows from sacred scripture and from the Fathers of the Church. Here is what they say. Holy Scripture speaks of the heart as the inner essence of the human being and the core or the center of the entire person. The spiritual and moral state of the whole person depends upon the state of the heart. The heart is the seat not only of feelings, but also of cognition, self-awareness and consciousness, as well as the human being's other spiritual powers. The heart is the sanctuary of the human being, where one stands before the face of God. In reality, there is a sense in the, in the understanding of the East which matches what we see in many spiritual trends in the West, such as Carmelite spirituality, the spirituality of John of the Cross, Teresa of Avila and her interior castle, Therese of Liseu, who we just talked about. The sense that in our spiritual lives, we don't go out to God, but we come in to Him, because He is in the center of our lives, the center of our hearts, the center of our souls. The heart is the sanctuary of human beings, where one stands face to face with God. We stand before the face of God in the center of our hearts. This is slide number 14. We stand face to face in the center of our heart. It is precisely here that God will fill up our hearts. We see this as well in the writings of, of Saint Teresa of Avila, where she speaks, "Lord, Lord, expand my heart so that I may run after your law," quoting the Psalmist. Quoting the Psalmist. Let's move on. Dependence on God. Therefore I tell you, "Do not worry about your life, what you are to eat or drink, or about your body, what you are to wear. Is not life more than food, and the body more than clothing?" We're on slide 15 now. In this passage, we see that the word worry is used five times. Worry, worry about the things of this world. Worry and concern about where, what we are to eat, what we are to drink, what we are to wear, how long our life will be. In reality, Jesus says, we are not to worry about our life. We're not to worry about our body, but we are to recognize our utter dependence upon God for everything. He says, "Is not life more than food, or the body more than clothing?" Ultimately, dependence upon God is about trusting in God. Let's listen to the words, and we're on slide number 16 now. Listen to the words of Saint Catherine of Siena, who says, "We worry about our lives ultimately because we do not really trust God." This point which Jesus makes in the Sermon on the Mount is echoed in the dialogue God had with Saint Catherine. Why do you not put your trust in the Creator? Because your trust is in yourselves. "I am not faithful, am I not faithful and loyal to you? Of course I am," God says. "But it seems that you do not believe that I am powerful enough to help them and strong enough to aid and defend them against their enemies, or wise enough to enlighten and understand their understanding, or merciful enough to want to give them what is the necessity for their salvation, or rich enough to enrich them, or beautiful enough to give them beauty, or that I have food to feed them or garments to re-clothe them. Their actions show me that they do not believe in me." It's about trusting God, trusting that He has our best interest in mind, recognizing our utter dependence upon Him, our utter dependence upon Him, and His trustworthiness. And that's precisely what Jesus is getting at in slide number 17. "Look at the birds of the sky," he says. "They do not sow or reap; they gather nothing into barns, yet your heavenly Father feeds them. Are not you more important than they? Can any of you by worrying add a single moment to your lifespan? Why are you anxious about clothes? Learn the way the wildflowers grow; they do not work or spin. But I tell you that not one, that not even Solomon in all his plunder was clothed like one of them. If God so clothes the grass of the field that grows today and is thrown into the oven tomorrow, will he not much more provide for you, oh, you little faith?" Jesus wants us to understand that God will supply our physical needs, that God will make provision for us, that God is trustworthy. And so we need not fear placing our hope in Him, recognizing our dependence upon Him, recognizing that He will give us what we need. Yes, in this life, we need to work. Yes, in this life, we need to, to do all of this, but, but, the reality is, He will provide for us. We need not fear placing our utter dependence upon Him. We need not fear to place our dependence upon Him at all. I'd like to see if there are any questions at this, at this point.
Father.
Yes. Hello?
Yeah, this is Cecy.
Yes.
I was just, you know, with the, the trust in God. I know that we need to trust in God, but you, sometimes you don't wonder whether God is really thinking of you. And I mean, how do you get over that? It's just...
Well, I think part of it is we feel like we're so small in the world. How many of us, how many of us feel that we, that we are small and insignificant? And why would God place us, place so much attention upon us? Does that make sense?
Yes, yes.
So that's, that's where we come from. We recognize our own insignificance, but at the same time, it's, it's almost like, do we understand how beloved we are? And how, how He created us and desired us to come into existence? And how close He is to us? And He's close to those who don't even think that pay Him any attention or any mind? Because there's a foundational relationship that everyone has with God, that all creation has with God. They exist. As Saint Paul says, "In Him we live and move and have our being." There's a foundational relationship with all creation through the fact that we are existent, we are held in being by the power of His love. But there's more than that. There's, there's that relationship of grace which comes to us through Jesus of Christ, Jesus Christ, which we receive in the sacrament of baptism, which is another layer upon that. We are beloved. We are beloved. Are there, are there any other questions? You can unmute yourself if you wish. Anyone else? All right. Well, why don't we, I'm just gonna leave, leave this the way that it is right now. And, and we'll just, we'll just go back to... Hello?
Yes.
Okay. So we'll just go back to the presentation. And so, so we find ourselves on slide number 18. "So do not worry and say, 'What are we to eat? What are we to drink? What are we to wear? All these things the pagans seek. Your heavenly Father knows that you need them all. But seek first the kingdom of God and His righteousness, and all these things will be given unto you besides.'" What does Jesus mean by seeking first the kingdom? Christians must prioritize in their life the pursuit of holiness. Each one of us is called to pursue holy. This is not an excuse for laziness in practical matters. We all have our lives to live, right? We all have to deal with, with the things that we find in this world. We all have to pay our bills, including me, and pay our taxes. We all have these other things that we need to take care of. But what should be first? The kingdom. The kingdom and the righteousness that God calls us. First of all, before we go any further, what do we mean by righteousness? Righteousness is simply to live an ordered life in right relationship with what God expects of us. To live a life of righteousness is to live in, in relationship with, with God in the, in the vertical dimension. It also means to live in relationship with one another in the horizontal dimension. Because we can't say, "I'm going to, I'm going to live for God" and not, not recognize the neighbor that God loves as well. And so there is a twofold dimension of this. But to seek first His kingdom is, is first and foremost a call to trust in the Father's care for us. Sacred Scripture, over and over and over again, reminds us of that fact, that we are called to seek first His kingdom. For those who haven't used Zoom before, if you're on a cellphone or on a tablet, sometimes if you, if you go one way or another from where your picture is, just scroll back and forth, you will see, you'll see a press to speak button, and that's how you unmute yourself, okay? Just so everyone is aware of all of that. Okay. We see the catechism of the Catholic Church telling us this. From the Sermon on the Mount onwards, Jesus insists on conversion of heart, reconciliation with one's brother before presenting an offering on the altar, love of enemies, prayer for persecutors, prayer to the Father in secret, not heaping up empty phrases, prayerful forgiveness from the depths of our hearts, purity of heart, and seeking the kingdom before all else. This filial conversion, filio meaning from the Latin, filius, the word for son. It is our, our relationship of children to the Heavenly Father is entirely directed to the Father. It is about doing the Father's will first and foremost. We're, we're going to deal with, with, move to slide number 19, God and Money. No one can serve two masters. He will either hate one and love the other or be devoted to one and despise the other. You cannot serve God and mammon. Mammon is the Aramaic word for wealth or property. And this is on slide 19. Jesus warns that earthly possessions can threaten an undivided love of God. And the New Testament elsewhere exposes the dangers of surrounding money and the accumulation of, of temporal goods. In other words, our focus, our primary focus should not be upon these things. The, the reality that we need to understand about this is this. What is it? Let me just go to 19 because I messed up. What is this? That is it having things that's the problem? Excuse me a second. Where am I? There we go. Is it having things that is the problem? No. The question is whether our possessions possess us or whether we possess our possessions. The, the real, the real question is, do they, do they rule over us? Or do we rule over them? We need to recognize that God has to be first and foremost. And we are given the gifts that we are given for, for yes, for our use. But we're also given them for the purposes of the kingdom. We are caretakers of what we have. We are called to be generous with what we have, and we're gonna be talking about that in, in a few moments. We see that all of this is about being detached. What attaches us to things? Is it having them that attaches us? No, not necessarily. It's desiring things that attaches us to things. It is desiring to have them that attaches us to things. St. John of the Cross says that it's all about desire. It's all about desire. It's, it's what attaches us. I use the, when talking about attachment to the things of this earth, I use the analogy of walking around with a, a suit made of Velcro. It's like, all we have to do to get attached to something is desire. We don't even have to have it. Oh, I see this, this Mercedes Benz. Oh, wouldn't it be nice to have that? Boom! It's attached to me. It's attached to me because I desired it. There are many other things that we did. So what is detachment? It's getting rid of our attachments to things in order, in order that we might place God first and foremost. It is a normal condition of growth and holiness in our lives to become detached. How can we tell if we're detached from something? I remember years ago, a friend went over to, to Italy and went to all these shrines in Italy. And I found out afterwards that, that she had touched it to all these holy places, this rosary that she gave me. Well, I had the rosary. And then someone said, "Oh, that's a nice rosary, Father." I said, "Do you want it?" Gave it away. And while she was a little miffed at me, "Don't you know what I did, Father?" "Oh dear, I'm so sorry about that." But it, it was obvious that I wasn't attached to it, although I could understand her angst with me. I can understand her angst with me. I think part of what will help us to understand all of this is to look at, at one of what we call in the West, this, one of the seven deadly sins, what is called in the East, one of the eight capital sins. And this, this again comes from the Ukrainian Catholic Catechism because I like the fact that what they do is they always show you what the opposite virtue is to get out of this. And which I think is, is good. They talk about avarice as being a passion for money and material goods. The Holy Father's taught that love of wealth is part of, is not part of man's innate nature, but appears a distortion of man's desire for eternal life. We all desire to live forever, right? Every single one of us desires to live forever. And this is a, this is a desire on the part of someone to say, "I want to live forever, but I want to live right here." They don't desire the eternal life that God has for us in the kingdom. They said, "No, no, I'll make my own pile right here. I'll make my own pile right here." And so, and so this passion for acquiring wealth takes possession of the person and makes one a slave to money. The acquisition of wealth becomes an end in itself and leads to other various sins. Remember, these are capital sins. There are always sins that have other sins, little lesser sins, attached to them that these are the cause of. Such a passion gives rise to the illusion of one's self-sufficiency. I become my own security. I become my own security. I don't need God. I don't need God at all. St. John Climakis, one of the Fathers, Eastern Fathers of the Church, regards avarice and greed as idolatry because in their blindness, the person places all their hopes on earthly goods. What goes against avarice? What goes against avarice is, what goes against avarice is generosity. I re-alluded to that. The virtue of generosity and its concrete expression, almsgiving, makes a person capable of properly managing material goods and growing rich in God. The person who is generous, it doesn't mean that they do not have material wealth. It's just that they're not attached to it. St. John Chrysostom says this, "Let there be no gold lying by in your houses, but that which is more precious than millions of money, that is alms and love to man for your treasure; for this gives boldness towards God, but the other causes the devil to bear hard on us. Arm your right hand against him; stow away all your fortune in your mind instead of in your chest and in your house. Let heaven keep your gold. Why then do you neglect? Why, why do we, to neglect of our own selves, waste all our attention upon these things? Which when we are gone, who can reach, who can longer reach? Yet even while we stay here, we cannot keep hold of when we might have such riches as are found, not in this life only, but also in that and in the, in the easiest of circumstances." Let's talk about, I'm going to, before we go any farther, I'm gonna go back and I'm going to open up. I'm going to open up to anyone who wishes to ask a question at this point. Is there anyone? Is there?
Can you hear me, Father?
Yes.
Oh, Father, good. I, I'm a member, I've been a member of the Carmelites for a year now. And we have just been studying up on the poor in spirit. And so I have a little sentence here if I could read it because there is a section on here that I, I don't really fully understand.
All right.
Okay? And it says, "Some are content with a certain degree of virtue, perseverance in prayer, and mortification, but never achieve the nakedness, poverty, selflessness, or spiritual purity that the Lord consoles here, counsels here; for they still feed and clothe their natural selves with spiritual feelings and consolations, instead of divesting and denying themselves of these for God's sake." But Father, what does it mean to, they still feed themselves, they still feed and clothe themselves with spiritual feelings and consolations?
And this is from Teresa?
This is from the Carmelites.
Oh, I was just wishing, wishing to know the source so that I...
St. John of the Cross.
Oh, St. John of the Cross, okay. That, 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 that makes perfect sense. The, the reality for St. John is that, that he, he sees detachment as being almost total, total gift of self to God in, in everything. But he says that we can be attached not just to material goods, but we can be attached to spiritual feelings, warm fuzzies that keep us from, that keep us from giving ourselves totally to God. He is, he is, he is, in fact, the next time that we, next Bible study, I do have a quote from John of the Cross, which, which kind of moves in that, that general direction. But he would see that it is possible not to be attached just to, just to things, but to be attached to warm feelings. We have to remember, I think this is a little, little beyond where, where our, where everybody else is right now. But I'd be glad to talk to you about this at some future point of what he actually means, okay?
Okay.
Any, any, anyone else? Before we go on? Okay, wonderful, wonderful. Well, the next teaching we have is on almsgiving, which is a very important, a very important one. We saw how generosity is the counter for avarice. And so Jesus wants us to do things for the right motivation. He says, he says, "Take care not to perform righteous deeds in order that people see them; otherwise you will have no recompense with your heavenly Father." If our reward is that other people see us and say, "Oh, isn't he a good person?" Or slap us on the back and give us an adavoy for, for what, for what we have done. Is there anything virtuous about that? But rather, God is asking us to put aside that, put aside that pride and to give generously for love of Him and for love of the person that we are giving this to. Because, because it, if we have the attitude that we are, that we are, "Oh, aren't I so wonderful that I, that I gave this or that away?" Or that I did this, that, or the other thing? Or, and what does that do to the person that I'm giving it to? Doesn't that demean them? Say, "Oh, you, you poor, poor person, you, aren't you glad that I, that I came down here and gave you my stuff?" Well, the, the reality is, what's our motivation for almsgiving? Is it true generosity? Is it true generosity? Do we see ourselves as those who are sharing? Sharing what God has given to us? Are we sharing these gifts that God wants to give, to, give to others through us? Are we an instrument of His love? We need to recognize that true charity always upholds the dignity of the other. One thing that, why he calls the scribes and the Pharisees hypocrites. Hypocrites refer, refers to someone who is an actor, a stage player, somebody who's putting on an act, who is performing these things in order to be seen. He's saying, "No, it can't be that with you." He's calling us to a pure intention that seeks to, to give to those in need based upon our love for God and our love for them in all things, in all things. Let's kind of summarize and then we will have, have an opportunity for discussion if anyone would like to. Who are the poor in spirit? We're on slide number 23. Who are the poor in spirit? They are blessed with God's love and graces in this life and live in an expectation of eternal reward. They, first of all, that they're blessed. Second, they recognize their need for God and find their ultimate hope and security in Him. They are typified by a spiritual dependence upon God and a spiritual childhood. Three, the true treasure of their hearts is God and His kingdom. They are detached from worldly things and are fully attached to God. I've, I've gone over into number four. They do not worry about earthly things, but place their trust in God, who knows their needs. It's not that they don't take care of the things of this earth that we all have to take care of. But they recognize that everything that they have comes from God and everything they have is a gift. They seek, number five, they seek first God's kingdom through a life of holiness. And six, they are generous with the gifts that God gives them. They are generous with the gifts that God gives them.